I'm gonna call to order this meeting, assuming I'm the acting chair again today. The Planning Commission meeting for Monday, June 16th, 2025. And today we are having a work session on the code development or the development code update. First, we're gonna start the planning director's update.
Thank you. I won't take much time. Kevin's gonna give you a little introduction on the work session tonight. Unlike a public hearing, we have. This is a project. It's a work session, so we'll be looking for your recommendations. We also have some staff and consulting teams online with us. And I believe we have. That's Matt Hasty here. He'll do an introduction to his team. And I believe we have a PC member viewing online as well. The next item we do. On your agenda is the selection of the chair. We have been without a formally recognized chair since December when Mark Frost. Resigned his position after after being required to move. So it would be a good thing to have available as appointed chair. They have they serve as. Really, the the meeting orchestrator. They have no additional powers. However, oftentimes they do work with the staff in order to make sure the agenda is correct. The scripts are written legibly and that they're translated well in any other kind of orchestration protocol. Rules of order, meeting minutes that happen here. So. Please give suggestions. We are we are open to them. Remember, Hoffman has graciously served in the unofficial stead. So that was we're privileged to have you serve here first. So.
Thank you. I would volunteer myself for this chair position at this point, having done it a number of times since December. I've become comfortable with it. Thank you for being personal. Right. So do we get to vote on that now without the other members of the commission?
I think seeing no other nominations, we will will refer this to the to the city council.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I look forward to helping. I did have one question about the way that the work session is gonna go with the comment about public testimony. I know nobody's online, but should someone show up? What at what point will there be designated points where we? Allow someone to give their input?
For for the work session, we should have set aside an area on the agenda for unlike a public hearing. When there is actually a scripted piece within the hearing itself for. For interested parties to be heard with the work session, there's really no designate. It's not a discussion matter. So. On their on the agenda next time, we should place an opportunity for public to comment on anything. You know, whether that's in the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, we can determine that for next meeting, given that we have no one online wishing to participate.
Are we ready to ready to roll our act update?
Yeah, thank you, Kate. Interim Chair Hoffman, thank you. Again, tonight's work session is going to be with the assistance of Matt Hasty and Carrie Brennicky from the consulting firm MIG. The commission's last work session on the project was nearly a year ago, July of 2024. At that time, you reviewed the initial findings of the code audit, which was the first phase of the project. And we're now in phase two. This is the code update. Last weekend Dustin sent you a. Last week Dustin sent you a packet of material, including a cover sheet that provides some background. As well as three documents that were prepared by the consulting team. Tonight, Matt and Carrie are going to provide a quick overview of the phase two process. Review what we're asking of the commission tonight. Describe the approach to structuring the development code. Review and discuss what we're referring to as module one. It's the first of four batches of code material that will be drafted. And then discuss next steps. As a reminder, Dustin pointed this out. This is not a public hearing. It's just a work session, a discussion. Hearings to review code updates are expected to begin in the spring of 2026. And as we discussed earlier, if we get some interest from the audience, whether in the building or online. Touch base and figure out when to to take those comments. So with that, I think I'll just turn it over to Matt. And Matt's got a presentation for us. And Matt, you can share at your leisure.
Yeah, Matt, before you jump in, one thing to mention for you all and those watching online. We do have an opportunity to comment on any item of the code at any time in writing. It's an always open process. I believe we have a designated website. And page that allows people to submit comments on any topic they find interested relating to their code. So you do not have to attend in person. On lovely summer nights to to participate. We invite participation at any time from home, from. For many party really interested. So. Matt, sorry to jump in. Please take it away.
No worries. And thanks for having us. Can everybody see the presentation I'm sharing? Okay? Yes, sweet. Awesome. Well, thanks for having us. I'll do just kind of a quick introduction of myself and Carrie. So. As Kevin said, we're with MIG. We're a planning and communications consulting firm. Our offices are in Portland, but we have offices kind of all over the Western US as well. And so and we worked on the first phase of the code audit slash update project. So some of what I present tonight is going to be a little bit of a recap or repeat. And Kevin did a great job of just kind of describing the topics I'll cover, so I won't spend much time on that. I'll also note that whenever I say we usually I mean Carrie or Katie Vickers in my office because they're really doing the bulk of the work with my oversight and guidance. So Carrie, I'll do most of the presentation tonight, but Carrie's here to to chime in if I miss something or as needed. And also to help answer questions to the extent you have them. And we'll have some questions for you as well. So I'll talk about that. We'll kind of present the overview. And then we're going to walk through some questions with you, which are basically questions that were posed in one of the documents that we sent you. It was the the Article One provisions document. So. We'll walk through those and give you a little quick kind of background on those as we do that. And but before we get to that point, we'll just see if you have any questions for us as well. And I guess I would say if you have questions during the meeting, feel free to ask if you know. Particularly if it's just something for clarification, if I didn't explain something super clearly, or you just kind of need need to know more, let me know. And then otherwise we'll just kind of proceed in that way if that sounds good. All right. So just kind of a recap of the goals of this project. I think, you know, overarching goal is really just to help you all. Help you come up with a code that's just easier to use, easier for applicants to use, easier for your staff to administer, easier for you all to administer. When decisions come before you and you have to interpret the code or review an application for consistency with approval criteria or with specific standards. So that's really a pretty significant objective here. It's just to make your code more user friendly. And then also, there's a couple of objectives here related pretty specifically to housing. I will note that this project is being funded through grants, both from the state and also from the city or money from the city. And the state grants are really kind of focused on meeting certain housing requirements. One is to make sure that any standards in your code related to residential development are clear and objective. You don't require the use of discretion. So both the processes and the standards themselves are clear and objective. And then the second is just to address a variety of statewide housing legislation and regulations that have been adopted in the last few years. I think you all know it's been a pretty. The legislature has been doing a lot of things, the governor and the legislature. And so you and other cities. To some degree, have some catching up to do just to kind of incorporate those things in your code. So. Those are the things that the state grant sort of portion of this is is focused on, but we're really just doing the whole thing as one integrated project. But there is a certain amount of, you know, states sort of objectives are particularly these, and the city has additional objectives. And one of those is just to make sure that, you know, we have an equitable and inclusive process as we're moving through the through and updating the code. I think I'll talk a little bit about. Community engagement strategies will be incorporating in this process, but that's a super important goal for the city, for the state too. But I think, you know, the river is particularly interested in that as a goal. So. This diagram or graphic is just kind of showing you the schedule. It's kind of complicated. So apologies for that. In I'd say, you know, kind of the takeaways from this are that this is going to be a pretty iterative process. As you know, for this meeting, we sent you the first quote unquote module of code. Updating an entire code is a lot to kind of handle and review and deal with. So. We're splitting it up into kind of these four modules, and I'll talk about how those are organized in a moment. But that's partly just to give us all kind of manageable amounts of information to review and discuss with you and for us to identify some specific questions related to each module. So we've got kind of the series or this workflow where we prepare a draft module, we review and discuss that with Kevin and Dustin with, you know, with staff. And then we come to you and talk about it, and then we go to the council and talk about it. And then we kind of get to work almost right away on the next module, and it kind of flows through like that. And after we've had a set of conversations with staff and you and council, then we update that first module. And then at the end, we kind of combine not the end and but after we've gone through and worked on each of those modules individually. We go through a process of then combining everything into a single set of code requirements. And then we go through a review process on that again. And during that time period, when we're kind of working through the kind of, I'll say, the guts of the code on these modules, we'll also be. Interacting with other folks out in the community. And I'll talk about, you know, the ways we're proposing to do that. So we kind of go through. This module process, and then we go through again, kind of another iterative process of preparing and updating a combined code. And again, reviewing it with y'all. And then we prepare essentially an adoption ready. Code and then go through the the public hearings process with you and the council to adopt the code. And along the way, we also prepare a couple of supporting documents. You see the kind of down near the bottom. One is some graphics to illustrate specific types of development code standards or requirements. We also will be preparing a diversity, equity and inclusion analysis and findings related to the process we've gone through and the work we've done. And then finally, helping prepare a staff report and findings that support the adoption process. And show how this is all consistent with your comprehensive plan policies, as well as with state requirements. The statewide planning goals and administrative rules and statutes. So that's kind of in a nutshell, I guess. The process we'll be going through with y'all. Right now, we are scheduled to wrap this up in the fall of 2026. So it's a pretty lengthy process. But again, it's a lot of work, especially given sort of the scope of what we're doing with your code. So. So just kind of a quick summary of some of what we said needed to be done as part of that earlier phase of work, the code audit process. This is really going to be a pretty significant update to your development code. There will be, you know, certain elements of the structure of your code that will stay in place, but we will do a fair bit of reorganizing. Many of the standards will remain intact, but we will update some of those as well. We will replace some sections of your code with. With provisions that come from other sources. I'll talk about that in a little bit. We're likely to create some new sections, especially to address things that have come out again of the state legislature over the past few years. And there will be a lot of just revisions to other existing or remaining sections. So it's going to be a lot of changes to the code. So again, that's kind of why we're doing it in this. Iterative and also. Splitting it up into these four modules so that we're not reviewing all of that at once. So we've as part of kind of the initial. Recommendations as well, we've identified kind of our framework for the code update in terms of how we intend to go through the process of updating it. And I'm gonna actually just kind of skip to the next slide. Oh, no, I'm not back up a little bit. And we had earlier on in the code audit process identified some options in terms of how to update specific sections. We'll likely still continue to do that. You know, as you see in the discussion questions tonight, there's some just some questions about that. And I'll say more about the organization in a sec. Just a little bit about kind of the engagement strategy. Dustin and I think Kevin mentioned, you've got a project webpage for this project, and there's a space on there for people to comment and to get themselves on an interested parties list. So. That's an important just platform or avenue for people to learn about the project, to get themselves more directly connected to it. They can provide comments at any time, as Dustin said, related to the code and the code update process. Again, we'll be meeting with you all as well as the city council in a set of work sessions and then eventually hearings. We will be conducting a set of meters or excuse me, meetings with interested parties, similar to what we did or similar set of folks. To whom we talked to during the phase one code audit process. And that'll include a focus group specifically with members of the Latino community. That'll be organized and facilitated by the Nextdoor Inc. there with support from us. Using your social media communications just to let people know about the process, what's going on, opportunities for engagement. We intend to conduct some like super quick, almost like pop up online surveys or questionnaire. So they won't be long surveys. There'll be. Individual questions about specific code topics so that people can, if they're interested, respond pretty quickly to that. So that'll be something that happens also via the website and via that interested parties list. And then we're planning on preparing some short explanatory videos to help people understand this process. We're working on the first of those right now. So they'll be pretty brief, you know, like one and a half to two and a half minutes, you know, understanding kind of how people tend to interact with videos these days. They are not looking to watch really long things. So those will be pretty brief, and they'll just kind of help people understand what we're doing. Maybe hopefully answer some questions and give them the opportunity to then, you know, reach out directly to us to ask more questions. So. Those are some of our engagement strategies, as well as again, you know, meeting with all of you. So just kind of a quick review of what we've done so far in this process, because we've been at it for a few months, not too long, but since about. Kind of late February, early March. So we prepared a community engagement plan. And it describes in more detail the things I just talked to you about. Again, we we spent a fair bit of time talking to Kevin and Dustin about what's the right way to kind of structure the new code and therefore the code update process. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. We also have now drafted kind of the first set of provisions, the or new provisions for code module one. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute, in a minute. You all have updated your project web page to provide information about this phase of the process and let people know this is going on. And we've started in on code module two. Each of these modules is semi independent. There will be connections between them, but we had enough info to get going on module two. So that's already kind of underway. And then again, as I said, the production of that initial explanatory video is also underway. So those things are in process and the other things we've we've done. So in terms of how we're structuring this this code process and the code itself. So I think we made a reference in one of our documents to the TGM model code, but we neglected to define that acronym, TGM. So I'll kind of tell you what that means now, if you're not familiar with it. So that stands for transportation and growth management. And the TGM program, the Transportation and Growth Management Program, that's a program that's jointly administered by. The Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, and also the Department of Transportation. And it's partly, a lot of it is a grant program for local governments to help them with planning work. Code updates, all kinds of things. But I have early on in that program, the program commissioned preparation of a model code for small cities. And that was, I think, first prepared more than 20 years ago or about 20 years ago. I can't remember the exactly the vintage of that. It's been updated a couple of times since then. And it's been used, you know, really pretty widely across the state, especially by small communities, smaller communities. As they've updated their development codes. It is actually being updated again kind of as we speak. And our firm is actually helping the state with that update process. So I would say this is a fairly timely kind of. Couple of processes here because we'll be able to learn from the update process. It's actually not me, but somebody else in my office who's managing that update process. But we've already started to be able to kind of pick their brains about. Approaches to certain aspects of the code update and get information from the team that's working on that. So that's that's kind of that's really nice for us. And some of the types of things we'll be updating, they'll be updating they we, excuse me, as part of this process. So. That's the the sort of basis, the foundation for the structure of the the future code. And there's sort of four, the four modules that we've broken this up into mirror in large part, the structure of that model code. And the first one is an introduction to the code. What's the purpose of the code? How is the code used, etc.? Kind of sets the stage for anybody. Who's getting into your development code and looking at it, just sort of understanding that. And then there's a number of general provisions. And I'll walk through those in a moment here as well. So that's the first module. The second module is related to application procedures and land divisions. Right now, you have two titles in your code, 16 and 17. 17 is subdivisions, subdivision requirements. Oh, I got them flipped. Sorry. 16. Thank you, Carrie. 16 subdivision requirements, 17 is the rest of the code. So we will be essentially combining those two. Those two titles and the procedural stuff from title 16 will go into module two. The standards will actually go into module three. So there is going to be some reorganization of that part of your code in particular. So. Module two will be a good chunk of work, and then modules three and four, frankly, even more work. Because three will be your zoning regulations. So the regulations specific to individual zones, specially use standards as well. And then and those are primarily sort of development standards. And then. Module four will be community design and land division standards. So some of the title 16 stuff will actually end up in module four as well. So that's an overview of kind of the structure we're going to be working with. Throughout this process, I'm gonna maybe pause there and just make, I'm gonna check in with Carrie and make sure I got that right. Yeah, okay, she's nodding her head in the, there we go. Perfect. So that's the overall structure. The elements of module one, I'm not going to go into these in a lot of detail, but that's what you got in advance. Of this meeting with the exception of definitions, definitions will be in module one as well. But the definitions element, we've already kind of started work on that in terms of identifying. Where you've got multiple definitions in your code, what, you know, the TGM model code, what what it says in terms of definitions, what some other. Example codes say, and ultimately will be sort of, I will say, cleaning up the definitions of in your code and making sure that. All the terms that are used in your code are defined in that section, but that's really going to be kind of a working. Draft that section, and it will it will change throughout the process. So. We thought it would probably be premature to spend a lot of time, you know, reviewing that with you. So but we have started work on that as part of this module. The other parts of this module are again, purpose and authority. What's the purpose of the code and who has the authority to update it and administer it, etc.? A lot of record determinations and the nonconforming situations. That applies to nonconforming uses as well as nonconforming development, as well as nonconforming lots. So there's sort of different aspects of nonconforming situations. That's why we say situations and not just uses or development. And then code interpretation, kind of how any issues associated with the interpretation of specific standards or terms or anything like that. In the code, if there was a question about that, how that gets dealt with. And then finally enforcement. Of the development code provisions. So those are the pieces we've started working on. And again, we've kind of, for starters, been looking at what your code says, what the TGM model code says. And what some of the other codes we've worked on over the last several years say about different ways to approach these types of provisions or topics. So that's kind of, that's what we've got going so far. I'm gonna pause here and just see if y'all have any questions or comments for us before we start asking you some questions. And then we have like about a half a dozen questions that we're gonna, we're gonna pose to you, and we'll just kind of walk through those. I think I've got two per screen for the next or two per slide for the next few slides. But I'm gonna stop talking for a moment and just see if you have any questions for us about the process or anything I've talked about up to this point.
I do have one question, and it's about the. Code that was included in the packet that we have to review the module one code. Are the items in there that are italicized and in brackets, is that stuff that's being deleted? I wasn't quite sure if this is all the new code language that we're looking at, or if it is the old with changes?
It's generally the proposed new, except where we say things about your code says this. Or there's the blue boxes where we where we have basically some discussion notes to y'all or discussion questions. So I think it's generally what's proposed to be new unless we say, hey, we haven't actually updated this section pending, you know. Getting some additional guidance from someone. I think that's that hopefully that's accurate. Carrie, anything to add to that?
And there's also, it's the general section. The blue boxes are where we're requesting sort of guidance from the planning commission and the city council. Kevin and Dustin have very like technical aspects that they have a lot of comments on that we will be working through with them. But it's not quite as policy driven. It's more technical. So a lot of the italicized things were, yeah, leftover options from the model code that Cindy's could choose to put in or alter. And that's why they're italicized is they aren't really things that are solid, solidly in the code yet.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anyone else have any questions? No, no? I don't think so. Okay, feel free to go forth.
All right. So we're gonna just kind of walk through a few questions with you. I'll try to kind of preface the question with a little bit of information about what your code already says or doesn't say about these topics. And hopefully I'll get that right. And if I don't, Carrie will correct me or Dustin or Kevin. And I think in each case, you know, we're just kind of interested in any comments y'all have, any suggestions y'all have. We're not really looking either for like a. Consensus recommendation. It's more just having a discussion with you and getting a sense of what you each think. If you all agree on something, that's awesome. You know, we're gonna kind of. Listen to what you all have to say. We're gonna have a similar discussion with the city council. As Carrie said, we've gotten a lot of comments on what we've prepared so far from Kevin and Dustin. And then we'll be kind of pulling all that together into a revised draft of this module. So that's kind of what we're trying to do with these questions tonight. Kevin or Dustin, anything to add, anything to get that right?
Yeah, I think we, you know, as Matt mentioned, we have some draft language here. I would not consider it formal final draft language. But it definitely from the model code. It helps support and organize some of these key thoughts, especially in the background in the introductory and purpose statement. These are, they're important, but they're also very common when it comes to the purpose of a zoning code. How do we handle unusual situations, unclear situations? How does this represent, you know, the community's vision? Some of these are. Are very, they're they're common features to all codes. So there's definitely. Points and pieces where we are going to need to have some language updates and a lot of language updates, as Matt mentioned. But I think, you know, walking through, I think we've, Matt has highlighted and the MIG team has highlighted some of the key features to where. We're we're looking for your comments or your thoughts. We will be sharing them with city council. And Kevin and I will have the technical. Kevin and I will have the technical aspects too of, you know, our experience with them. And where have we, where has our code, we think, opportunities to make those improvements? We also want to see from planning commission, you know, from your vantage point, hearing quasi judicial requests, having to read the thing, having neighbors, you know, raise issues. Has the, having developers raise issue from your lens. We're definitely, we want to see that as, you know, from your perspective, are there things that, that have given you heartburn? You know, fortunately, and some of this isn't, you know, the introductory provision hasn't really, doesn't come up a lot with you. However, it is an important backdrop to everything that's going to come in the future modules. So thanks, Matt. Go ahead.
Yeah, no worries. Okay. So again, I'm going to just kind of walk through these questions. I'm just, I'll take them one at a time. I'll ask the question. We'll see what kind of comments or thoughts y'all have. And again, Carrie may have something to add to kind of my intro. So the first question has to do with the very first kind of part or one of the first parts of this module, which is a zoning checklist. So this is not, a zoning checklist doesn't represent an actual land use decision, but it is something you could codify in your code. It's essentially a tool for applicants to use and also for y'all to use to make sure that people sort of understand what's going to be required and what types of things are going to be reviewed as part of a land use process, especially for a type one application where these things, it goes through an administrative review. So the question here is, and, and so you don't have a checklist per se, like formalized right now in your code or your process. But you do a zoning review currently at the time as part of the issuance of building permits, where you've got something that's an allowed use, it goes through a building permit application process, but you're reviewing and making sure it's also meeting the, the development code standard. So the question on this is, you know, does this seem like something you think would be valuable to include? And should it be codified in your code? So I'll just stop there. Carrie, anything to add on that? Yeah. So that's the first question. So just interested in your comments on that one.
Comments?
Yes. The checklist would become a tool that would be mandatory if it was incorporated in the code. It would be a sort of a, some kind of a list or process that would have to be sort of, you did this, yes, you did this. And I guess if that's the case, I guess my only question would be to the staff that, you know, an extra burden? Is this an undue burden to you? Might it be an undue burden to certain applicants? Would there be flexibility in it? Or is it very hard? Do we imagine it as a very stringent sort of checklist with many that could make it hard to do development? Or do you imagine it as actually helpful because it helps the applicant understand what they're doing better?
Yep. You want to go first, Matt, or you want me to go first?
Either way, I'm, I'm happy to start and, and then have you go. Carrie might have something to add too. I, I'll just say really briefly, this is really meant to be more of a tool and something to help applicants than to add another set of requirements for applicants. So it's meant to be a tool to help both applicants and staff just kind of know upfront before the project is underway, kind of what the requirements are going to be. So that's the basic intent of it. It really is not supposed to be something that is kind of an added step or an onerous thing for somebody. That's, that's my sense of it. Carrie, anything else? And then Dustin?
Dustin can probably chime in what, how it handled right now. They are doing a similar process right now that everything kind of goes, goes, every building that comes in goes through a zoning approval. This would make, the idea would be to make it clear to the applicant what is being looked for and looked at. So they will have a checklist about setbacks. They will have a checklist about other requirements, maximum height, they can have a map and other items. So the, the checklist would, would be a tool to, I would say clarify things for the applicant. But Dustin would probably be able to explain how it's working right now.
Yeah. So currently we do have checklists. They're not incorporated into the code itself. They're listed in applications. Does require you to read the application oftentimes before you submit it. So it's good, we like to advertise those expectations. Ideally, we're not looking for an undue burden on anyone. But we, we do try to be transparent and advertise things. This, I hope, is intended to do that. I think as we get into the code too, we are going to end up, well, absolutely, we will end up having more uses that are going to be permitted outright. Just by virtue of the change in state law of, of things that have changed. And we think, you know, that, that is a procedural advantage. However, having more of those, you know, what does this mean? What pieces are there? What elements are required as a part of that? That we refer to them and they're referred to as type one processes. They're essentially building permits. Right now, we review and comment on those as a part of the building permit application. However, nothing is particularly, other than our own guidance and some of the out of code elements, there's really nothing that prepares an applicant for entering into that. So they submit a house. We start commenting on, okay, this is the height of the house. This is how many parking spaces there are. This is the setbacks. There's really no codified checklist that comes before that. We have handouts that help people, but it's, it is disconnected to some extent from the code. So oftentimes people will say, well, where is this in the code? Well, it's the whole code. You, we're, we're not going to be able to allow you to build something that is outside of the zoning setbacks. And, and this is kind of a, the way we see it as a, it's a preparedness factor. Be prepared. This, this is what you should anticipate coming through this. We are trying to advertise this so that, you know, you may not like the answer, but you should not be surprised. And we, no one likes surprises in the process, though. Neither the staff nor the applicant.
I think it sounds like a good idea. Anything that will make any of these processes simpler for people before they start seems like a good choice.
Awesome. Yeah. Any, anybody else have any other thoughts? And if not, we'll move on to the next one. Yeah.
Just, yeah, I guess in terms of comparing, comparing to what it is now, does, does it seem like it would accomplish that, making, making people more aware of what they would expect after you submit an application versus?
Yeah, I, I think that's what it's intended to do. It doesn't work on its own. I think, you know, we're going to have to think about this in context. Or we'll have to also elaborate it in context of the process. So that next module, when we start talking about procedurally, how do you approve application pieces? This should be modified to harmonize with that. There is a checklist and this is the lane that you enter in. They, they should, they should flow together so that they're not just two complete independent discrete items. So.
So with the checklist, somebody could come in and say, hey, this is what I'm planning on doing. You guys can hand the checklist and they could kind of just see what to expect for.
Or they would also participate in it. I haven't, I've been provided a checklist. Here it is. I, I also understand, or here are my questions about the checklist. Based on what your expectations are, we have questions about what we should be delivering. It's, it's both ways. So it's not just a handout. It's also something that is prepared by, by an applicant. You know, not in drawing form, but, but it should be an acknowledgement that my, my plans have been reviewed. I understand some of the rules that I'm, I'm building against. Or there's an opportunity to say, I don't understand. It's on the checklist. This doesn't make sense. So it, it should give us a, an early detection and early warning, both applicants and staff of that, yes, we understand the rules or no, we don't. Versus here's a project, it's been prepared. I had no ideas what, what the rules are, nor have you advertised them to me. So.
Yeah, and all this.
Yeah, I can add a little in there is it's helpful to be able to get this process going with applicants before they finalize their design and submit their building plans. And jurisdictions that happens is they get their building plans going. They've got their, everything on the site and then they were unaware of all these requirements that they need to follow. So by having the checklist upfront, we get this portion completed. They can check all these things before they really finalize their building plans.
Yeah. And I'll just maybe provide a little example. Cause it's a thing I've actually been working on the last few weeks. So our firm, we help cities and counties update their development codes. But we also often help folks go through the, the application review process. So like right now, I'm actually helping with a process like that down in Marion County. It's actually a county going through the county. It's one department of the county going through the county's land use permitting process. And they don't have to fill out a land use application. So they go straight to a building permit application, but they still have to conform to the, the land use planning requirements, the code requirements. So I, they don't have a checklist, which is fine. So in helping them, we want to make sure that when they bring their built, their plans forward, just like Carrie said, they are in conformance. So I basically created my own checklist and looked at, do their current plans conform to that? To help them get through the process. So that's an example of, I had to do that for them as the applicant because the county doesn't have kind of its own checklist. So, you know, it, it helps save somebody from like having to walk through that whole code themselves and kind of figure it all out before they get their project going. So that's, that's how I would sort of think about it, maybe. It is intended to be helpful. It may, you know, it requires them to do some thinking, but it's sort of doing it upfront instead of once they've already like come up with a bunch of plans and find out they're not consistent with some of the requirements. So that's how I would think about it, or that's one example of a way to think about it.
Also in terms of process, a checklist is typically much easier than a redesign. So you come in with a house that's 10 feet too tall. We will have wished that we had a checklist. Because it's, it's cheaper than, than having an architect reduce the height. So.
Do you, do you find people coming up with a whole site plan prior to talking to somebody at the planning department?
Not super common, but it, it does happen. Occasionally some people kind of get the design out front before they've had a chance to talk to staff and get more familiar with the code. And, and those are difficult. Those are, those become very difficult situations. So I think we, we really do try to be accessible and we're here every day. We have a website. We have full-time staff. We are trying to flag things. However, they, it does happen. And, and again, I think if we are going to, you know, well, as we're required to handle more and more complicated pros, projects, straight to permit, uses by right, as required by the code, you're going to end up with an increasing number of people and projects and large complicated projects going that way. That is something we want to be mindful of too. So it's no longer just a single dwelling or a deck or an expansion. You're now into duplexes. You're now into land divisions that are required by type one. You have a lot more things, a lot more, call it ambitious and dynamic and expensive projects are going to go through those reviews because the state has required you to do so. That is where I become increasingly nervous because it's, you know, a deck redesign is one thing. A townhouse project or a, you know, multi-unit project becomes increasingly difficult to redesign efficiently. So it's, it's, it's in anticipation of more things coming through.
I guess just procedurally, if somebody is preparing for a big project, seems like you would go through, find out what your, what zone your property is on and what the building standards are there? And how, how would this checklist get ahead of somebody going on to our current website? And just making sure, just by reading the code before they embark on a project?
I mean, I think it would just give them a tool to make it easier to do that, frankly. It doesn't mean they wouldn't necessarily do that. They might do it first. It's just kind of another way to help inform them about, hey, here's some important things you want to be looking at when you're getting, preparing your application or working on the design of your project. And again, I think kind of what you're hearing is staff and consultants probably think this is a good idea. But, you know, we want to see if you agree or, or don't agree. I've heard at least one person say, yep, sounds like a good idea. Some really good questions about this, but what do, you know, what do y'all think? Should we pursue this as part of this module or, or not? From your perspective?
Yes, we don't have to vote on it.
Yeah. And we, I'd love to take different opinions too. Like, you know, this is not looking, we're not looking for, for, three of you said yes and one of you said no. Therefore you, you have no voice. So if there's caveats to, planning commission generally supported this, however, there were, and this is in general across the board as we go through this, you know, caveats or conditions or can, what do we not want to do? You know, we're supportive in this. Here's where it goes, here's where we think it could go wrong or what you want to be mindful of. I think we, we want to take those, those notes as well. So.
And I, I think it's great that we provide something to make maybe the, the code more digestible for somebody who does want to maybe turn some, you know, turn it into a bigger project. But I guess just procedurally in my head, I'm just like, wow. I would think before you invest any money into something, you would just read.
I, I think, you know, you, we, the code is used by all applicants. Those who, this will be their first and last project ever. So, you know, they, they hit every blind spot, you know, that they go through. Those that have kind of a, you know, the most important project they'll ever do, which could be their, you know, their house. It could be their first other house. It could be their expansion. And then we have our institutional, you know, full-size subdivision, seasoned pros. You know, you can hand a seasoned pro the code book and say, here you go. This is, this is what you do. You're a professional. You do this for a living. That approach doesn't work when it's your first time. So, you know, if we have those opportunities to provide some, you know, a truncated list or here's all the high points, or here's a series of high points that, that you should be aware of. I think, you know, that's going to be helpful for our, hopefully a greater class of applicants rather than those that, you know, it's not Hayden Homes, you know, they do this for a living. They have a series of people, they have their full complement of engineers, architects, lawyers. You know, they do this. They speak the language. They know what to do versus, you know, your neighbor, you know, who, you know, they don't want to read the zoning code. They don't have time to. It's not worth their time and energy to do so, probably on the onset, or it could feel intimidating to do so. Or they have read it and it just makes no sense, which is not an unusual question.
Cool. I think we have discussed this one.
All right. I, I will jump to the next one. So the next few questions really kind of have to do with provisions related to non-conforming uses. So those are, you know, I think y'all know this, but things that were permitted previously, but are no longer allowed within a given area. So it could be a use that's not allowed. It could be that the, the nature of the development is out of conformance with your standards. There's not enough parking spaces or whatever it might be. So this first question kind of has to do with, do you have any thoughts about whether or not to allow some expansion of non-conforming uses? So right now, your code doesn't allow any expansion of non-conforming uses. That's different than, than things that are allowed, but maybe they're out of conformance with some of the development standards. But in terms of the use, you right now don't allow that. And so the question is, is that, is that good? Or do you think it's worth considering allowing some expansion? And that could be up to a certain percentage. You know, you'd allow up to a 10% or 20%, 15%, whatever it might be, expansion of a non-conforming use. So that's the question there. Do you want to keep it kind of as is? Not allow any expansion or do you want to allow some level expansion, even though the use is non-conforming?
So just as, as context, you're, you know, this, this code and section of the code comes up on page 17 in the packet. Currently the, the city code has a, a purpose statement in it that the current zoning code basically says non-conforming uses. The goal is to see them eventually become conforming or run their lifespan and discontinue. That, that's the way the current Hood River code is set up. There are other options out there. That, that's the way the current Hood River code is set up. There are other options out there. You know, not necessarily in conflict with your, with your comp plan that, that allow these uses to expand. That would be a change from your current practice. So an example would be barber shop built before it wasn't allowed in the residential zone. It's a use. Applicants today would be allowed to maintain that use in its 2,000 square feet. And it's 2,000 square foot capacity. It would not be allowed to become a 4,000 square foot barber shop. Or, or 2,001 feet. We would, we would not allow that expansion to occur by code. It would say the use is non-conforming. It cannot be expanded. Some codes in the state of Oregon would allow that to be increased 10%. You could add 200 square feet. That, those are, those are options that are out there. So.
Yeah, and I'll say with these things, like there's no right or wrong answers. It's really just, you know, what makes sense to y'all.
Or is it all or nothing? Could you apply this to certain use types and not other use types? Or if you, I don't know, like industrial, you know, the different use types. Did you allow or even within certain subsections of use types like a retail use? Or if you make it, say a percentage that you can increase beyond the current non-conforming?
Could I, could I interrupt real quick and just ask, when you're talking, could you make sure you're close to your mic?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I, I catch most of what you're saying, but like some of it I don't quite.
Yes, my question, I apologize for all. I did not, I don't have a versatile in the microphone usage.
I don't either.
If you, if you, would this type of provision apply equally, I guess, to all use types? Or could you craft it so that it would apply to retail, for example, or a certain type of class of retail? Or, you know, type of use?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And it, we have a question later on that talks about some exemptions related to non-conforming uses associated with like single-family residential. And so, yeah, you could, you could apply this to uses, certain uses or uses over a certain size or things like that. And then again, you can decide that you're going to, even though it's non-conforming, you're going to allow some expansion, but not more than a certain percentage. So there are different ways you could apply this. I don't know if Kevin or Dustin have any sort of thoughts about those options in terms of, you know, would you want to or not want to apply this sort of differentially to different uses or different size uses?
Our code currently does. It differentiates residential from commercial use. So internally, there are some unique provisions that are written for larger uses. It doesn't, doesn't differentiate. It's, it's not 100% every use is different. However, there's a clear distinction between residential and non-residential. And there is a clear distinction between uses over 25,000 square feet in size, I believe. Or a certain, there's a certain size cutoff that also is, has its own section. So.
I saw the residential section in this.
And that, that question's coming too. That's a, that's an important one.
Well, my personal feeling is I'm a, I think just that a little bit of flex, a bit, but not a lot of flexibility is a really good thing when I think of small business owners. Exactly like the type you described. I've seen it happen where due to modernization needs or a way to thrive, they need an extra small amount. I think there should be limits, but I would be in favor of changing it from away from for, you know, assuming this is not a residential use, which sounds different for some commercial small uses to have a little bit of flexibility, but not, you know, what that amount is. I don't know.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think that it sounds like that prevents people who have non-conforming structures from having to come back to, to the planning commission, right? Every time they, if they wanted to expand it, we'd, we'd have to have like a hearing about it, right?
Because we'd have to make sure that they still are within the non-conforming, that we still approve of their non-conforming use.
Either a hearing for a variance or an appeal based on my denial. So that would be something to where, you know, if, if we were in the code now and we had a non, non-conforming use, the only answer that I have, and essentially the only answer you have is shall not expand. But that is, that is a pretty clear cut arrangement right now, unless there was some sort of variance process that could get them. Use becomes diff- difficult because there's really no use variance. Unless it's some sort of mathematical standard that they're looking at. So that becomes, that one becomes even more rather rigid right now.
Okay, is it, one, one more thing, just pull that thread a little bit. You talked about coming back to the planning commission. If you notice the language in section A, the last sentence in there is in, it's bracketed in parentheses or bracketed in italicized, then it does talk about, this is an option. Code could be written this way to require, in the event that we wanted to allow some expansion of a non-conforming use, to require conditional use permit, come back to the planning permission. So that there's some additional oversight rather than just having that in front of staff for review. So that's a, is an option as well. Does that sound right, Matt?
Permitted, Matt?
Yep, sorry, I asked, it's, the unmute button disappears on me when I'm in the current view I'm in. So I always have to make it appear and find it. Yes, so that is an option. You could. Yeah, you could make it a conditional use and it could be something planning commission comes sees or not, you know, so. Or it could be just essentially a staff level decision. And like Dustin said, it would just come back to you on appeal. Or somebody wanted to do something even different, more different.
Or, or you could have a varying degree. If it's a small enough piece, staff, and it's non-discretionary, staff is authorized. If it's over a certain size, it's going to trigger, it will trigger a public hearing. So kind of like site plan, we have a minor site plan, administrative type two site plan, I'm the deciding factor on that. You're the appeal body. A quasi judicial site plan, one of greater magnitude, there's a type three, you are the hearing body. City council becomes the appeal body. So it can also be handled that way if, if you're, if you're open to that. So it's varying degrees.
Yeah, something to that effect. Good to give some flexibility to some type of rigid system.
All right, I, I think I'm hearing generally people like the idea of providing some flexibility in this way. And that some variability in terms of the review process people go through makes sense as well. You know, in terms of the size or the scale or the scope of the proposed, the, the use and the type of expansion. So I get that, get that right. All right, I'm gonna keep going. We got two down, four to go. So, and again, a couple of these are sort of variations a little bit, you know, on the same theme. So this next one has to do with alterations to non-conforming development or structure. So this is not as much about whether the use is non-conforming, but whether the, the structure or the development has some non-conforming features. So again, it could be that it exceeds your height limits. Or it could be it exceeds, you know, block coverage standards or whatever it might be. So the question here is, is, should the code allow for some expansion or alteration of a development or building? Even if it would increase the, the non-conformance in that regard, so. Or not, I mean, so the, the, right now, basically, you don't allow expansion or alteration for anything that's going to increase the non-conformity. So it's going to make it even more non-conforming to a different, to a given standard. So the question is, is it okay to allow for some increase? Again, typically it's going to be up to a certain percentage. Even it's gonna, if it's going to increase that non-conformity to some degree. So that's the question here. Again, kind of a similar, but a little bit different question to the, the other ones around this broader topic.
My question is, and I don't know if, maybe there's an answer. Can you give an example of a detrimental result that you would get from increasing the degree of non-conformity without having to have a big conversation about it?
I mean, I think for instance, yeah.
Like I just don't know enough to like imagine what that would be. So it's, this is a little like existential for me.
I mean, height is probably a good one, you know.
Yeah, that was the first, the only one I could think of.
But it also could be, I don't know, sometimes cities allow for this, but they don't allow for it in relation to certain things. Like let's say setbacks, you know, you can, you can, if you're non-conforming related to setbacks, you just straight up don't allow somebody to get further into that setback area. But lot coverage, you know, if, if it's already covering a certain percentage of the lot and you allow it to cover even more of the lot, you know, somebody could find that detrimental, I guess. I don't know, Kerry had, I think, the height one, but other ones you can think of?
Yeah, I mean, for example, there's a house that is not meeting the front setback, but they want to put a second story on it. Would, would it be okay? I mean, it doesn't meet the setback, but they're going to increase the height, but the height isn't necessarily the issue with this house. So can you still, would you be able to approve that?
I could give you an example. In current code, that answer would be no. Because the planning director would say the setback is not just a 2D separation. The setback goes all the way from the, the earth to the, to the top. So we, I would not, I would not allow an expansion within the front yard setback, even though it's 10 feet. And they're not wanting to go nine feet, they're looking to take the second story into that 10 feet. That is an area where we wouldn't allow them to expand because we see the setback as it's not a 2D area. It's a 3D area. Now, if you have a house that was 10 feet in the front yard setback, or it encroached in the front yard setback and they wanted to put a rear porch onto their property with, outside of that, or an addition of their house to the rear. That is a circumstance where we would allow. The, it's the expansion of a non-conforming structure because the change doesn't make that non-conformity any, it doesn't irritate that. It doesn't make that non-conformity. It doesn't increase the non-conformity.
I'm not psyched about extra non-conformity. Things that give me heartburn include those kind of examples.
So where the, so. So. Yeah, so in this would be an issue where, say, a structure was too tall, built lawfully, too tall. However, they wanted to expand the first floor to where it doesn't change the height of the building. It doesn't allow and the building to increase in height. And whatever they added to would have to comply with the current code. It wouldn't just be automatically taller. Those would be provisions where we would allow a structure to be expanded, so long as it didn't increase the the non-conformity. Now, we wouldn't let them do a structure that was, you know, new addition to their home that was still too tall. Everything would have to, everything would have to comply with now what the current code was.
Sounds like we're leaning towards the only if they do not increase the degree of non-conforming choice.
Yeah, I mean, in Kerry's example, if they're adding a second story to an already non-conforming to the, to the front setback, I mean, it's not really necessarily. I guess that would be a good thing to bring to, to the commission. Since it's not changing the footprint per se in the two-dimensional realm, but it is going up within that non-conforming area. Yeah, I guess it, yeah, that's.
Yeah, cur- currently, like if, if that were in, just so you know, and that's, that's in my shop and my discretion. I would say this is an expansion of the non-conforming aspect. It's adding more mass into this area that is essentially set aside or more volume into the area that is supposed to be set aside for airspace between you and your neighbors. That is a, that's a non-starter.
Can I bring up an example and see, this is one, this is an example that I see quite, I've seen come up between neighbors. An old shed that is in the setback. Exists pre-setback rules. They want to rebuild it. It sounds like they can in the exact same footprint. It would be okay to, to rebuild it exactly as is, but not expand it. Is that, am I understanding it correct?
Right. So we have the re, we can get, we're crossing over to the rebuild question here too. But yeah, for, for that example, if you wanted to, if that shed was, say, 10 feet tall. We currently would not allow a 15-foot tall shed in the same location, even though it occupied the same land space because it's, it's actually taller. There is more mass within the setback. Therefore, it's not permitted. But if you wanted the same, technically, if you wanted to repair or rebuild it, like for like, same height link with height, not an issue.
That's what I've seen practically come up quite often. Okay.
And just, I mean, non-conformity isn't, is, you know, it's an interesting realm because it's, you gotta be imaginative as to what consequence your decision could have, but you know, like the loss of a view if a neighbor next to you did have was able to expand upward from a setback that maybe protects your view. And if it was not there already and we were to allow it, that could potentially.
Yeah, if, if you had a single-story structure next to you that was two feet off your property line, that's one thing. If that structure became a two or three-story structure within that set, within that same area, that, that could have meaningful effects. So especially the neighbor. I mean, that's there. Is, if you're the neighbor, so.
Do not increase the, the degree of non-conformity to this.
All right.
All right, all right. So the next one, one more sort of variation on this. This relates to the ability to essentially rebuild or replace a non-conforming structure that's been damaged or destroyed. And your code's pretty, I don't know the right word, liberal lenient, permissive on this one. I guess that's a better word. So your current code says if a structure or development is damaged by any means, it can be reconstructed to its pre-damaged, non-conforming state. So even if it was non-conforming, if it burns down, gets washed away in a flood, neighbor's car runs into it, whatever, by any means. It can be rebuilt to its original non-conforming. It can't, can't become more non-conforming, but it can be rebuilt or restored or replaced to its previous non-conforming state. So the question here is just, you know, is that, is that good? Or do you want to put any like limitations or sideboards on that? Because that's one thing you could do. You could say, well, you, you can't rebuild it completely to its non-conforming state. You know, you could rebuild it to, but it can't exceed the height limit. Or it can't, you know, be rebuilt into a setback if it was, you know, violating your setback requirements or something like that. So you could put some, or again, you could put some percentage thresholds on it or something. So that's just the question. Do you want any thresholds on this or keep it as it is?
I, I personally like keeping it as it is. I would hate to, just because something. There was an accident burnt down, you know, if it was there and that's how you had it and that's how that was the characteristic of any particular lot and neighborhood. I, I would think that everybody around would have been used to that and letting that particular property owner make his lot whole again seems quite fair.
So one, one nuance to this one, I think, you know, you all immediately, and I think Matt immediately went to what, what the law sometimes referred to as a force majeure or some act or our code is damaged by any means. We've had people use this as they want to deconstruct their building and demo it themselves. So this is not necessarily an existential damage. This could be, we want to tear this down and rebuild it. I think that's a clarifying point that we would, we would want to make sure that was in there. So can you just reconstruct it? So it is damaged because we tore it down and we would like to rebuild it. So your shed, for example, maybe your shed is. You know, in a, it's, it's operable, um, it's in poor stat, status. It's got mold in it. Somebody wants to tear it down and reconstruct their shed. That's not necessarily. Destroyed by any means. It is an act of reconstruction. So it would be good to, to set the. Kind of the bar on that.
And I support. Leaving it as is, or allowing the rebuilding by, I don't think it's good to be so prescriptive of why, personally.
Alright, that, then, yeah, damage or the recon, it would be a recon, reconstruction, so.
Yeah, as, as long as the, yeah, the nonconforming.
It's, it doesn't have to be, this could be intentional. You, you would allow that. Okay.
And again, can I ask everybody to speak into the mic? Just, um, I think you're, you're good. The person on my left is, uh, yeah.
Yeah, and it's really hard to hear what people are saying when you actually watch the videos later, if you don't literally talk into your microphone.
I think, okay, can, Matt, for purpose consensus from planning commission, they would want to allow, uh. The reconstruction upon damage, external force, or applicant initiated reconstruction.
Got it. Okay.
With no expansion.
Right, okay. Alright, um, we got one more, I think, that's related to. Nonconforming situations. So, uh, somebody asked earlier, um, you know, is it possible to have exemptions? For certain things and you do have some exceptions now for residential uses and telecommunication towers. And so the question is, do you want to retain those? And I don't know. Carrie, do you want to say anything more about, or Dustin, or Kevin, about kind of what the code specifically says on this topic?
Really the residential uses, the telecommunication towers are gonna be addressed really specifically in the. Code, so there'll be new requires. New requirements for telecommunication, communication towers, uh, when we write the new code. The old ones doesn't sound like there were many in the city of Hood River, so. Yeah, we are asking you if, is it okay? We just want to keep, uh, have them be exceptions. When the new rules come in for telecommunication towers. Um, that the old ones are just grandfathered.
Uh, in your packet, this was on page nineteen, and the current code exception, uh, that's in there right now, it, it does speak to, uh. Uh, it speaks to the residential, and this, this is actually a similar code that we would probably recommend for your nonstructure, but it says. Rebuilt if damaged or destroyed, they differentiate the two. Uh, for any reason provided it's reconstructed, has the same or fewer number of residential units and serves, and serves the same. Use as the residential or the original structure. So. Think it's intended to, you can rebuild a residential structure with same number of units. It's not intended to allow you to rebuild a residential structure and use it for a commercial purpose.
So your question is, should we keep this? Blue text.
Uh, for, yeah, for residential or, or the sentiment of it. And then communication towers, um, we don't really have a, that's one of the features that we have to construct. We don't have a telecommunication tower. Ordinance per se. There is an exception on nonconforming towers to be, to be modified. It, it has its own piece now. It, it's not necessary. Uh, you do have it. Uh, would you like to? Continue its exception or have it fall into the, the, the typical structure? Or do you have any feelings at all?
I'd say yes, keep this. Keep the exceptions.
I have a question of clarification for the residential. So if it's nonconforming, you cannot add additional residential units. You may maintain, if anything happens you, to a nonconforming residential use, you can. Keep the same number of, say it was a duplex, I don't know, or it would only be a duplex. Does this, does changing this for residential? Have any benefits to affordable housing creation? For example, I have, I have two units. I want to create three smaller units. Studios or smaller units. Do we see a world where it would be useful to have an exception of any sort?
Matt, you got any comment on that?
I mean, I, I, maybe, you know, I could see there could be some benefit. I mean, I think you'd want to, um. Probably put some strings on it. If, if what you're trying to do with that exception, for instance, is, um. Increase the number of affordable units, then you might want to say, if, you know, you can do this in the event that. That one or more of the additional units, however you want to, you know, um, structure it. Are affordable to people in a certain income range, you know, so I think you, you'd probably, if, again, if you're trying to achieve a certain goal through an exception like that. You'd want to be clear about what the goal is and how you require that. That, that's my quick thought about it. And I could see that being a benefit to meeting that objective.
Then there's the question of, I guess, compliance of, over the long haul on something like that. I am personally, um. Just to, I think housing supply. Without, uh, affordability requirements, just the idea of creating more units. Is sort of, is an important thing in and of itself. As I, and that's just a, a note that I wouldn't personally necessarily see a need to. Make it a, uh, affordability requirement, because I think that's just more. Restricted and difficult to manage over years, but. I'm not even sure if this is something anybody else would consider to be a, an interesting. Exception, but. I do see. A need. To allow creativity to get more. Housing, so. I don't have any answers, though.
And like, what, are we in a scenario then where we have like a twenty unit residential apartment building that? Burns down and then they rebuild it as a forty unit. Building and that's loud? Without anybody having an opinion on it in the planning department?
We want to be ready for anything, but, um.
Cause like, I'm sure we may have more units of housing, but like, are they quality in the housing? Are they just like? A horrible tiny studios that are not really good for much?
Well, I don't know. I think tiny, tiny, tiny studios can be valuable. I just think it's more of setting the expectation of, of. Of, of what would be allowed and whatnot. So we could say, you know, you've interest in expanding opportunities for housing. However, there's probably some sidebars on that that you would want to maintain.
Yeah, but maybe you wouldn't allow unlimited or be on a certain percentage increase in the number of units, or you'd make sure that. You know, the infrastructure around that, in that area could support that, or you know, I think, it sounds like some interest in this, but we've. Like Kevin or like Dustin said, we want to put some sideboards on it.
And I would also say that uniform quality throughout. But, you know, if you have. The unit turned into three, it doesn't mean that the third one's a junky one. In terms of quality material, similar quality build, if you're going to rebuild sort of uniformity.
But we'll get into those clear and objective standards later.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not sure if, um, junky is a clear and objective term. I know what you mean.
Some qual, lower quality materials to the others, so not objectively the same.
Yeah, definitely get the, I think we get, get the intent, but yeah, that makes sense. So yeah, that's something we can, we can explore. You know, as we're working on this section of the code, for sure. Alright, uh, we have one question left for y'all, and then if you have any other questions for us after this one, just let us know. So the last one we had in here, um, had to do with sort of, um, how we're going to approach. Um, procedures related to code enforcement and kind of where those are gonna, those are gonna lie, so. The question we asked here, sorry, I'm gonna actually. Flip the kind of the full question. So, um, let's see. We've got some language we included in your, in the document in your packet related to enforcement that comes from the. From model code and that's language we could incorporate into the code update. The alternative would be to rely on the civil procedures that are outlined outside the zoning code for. Um, how you handle enforcement. So this one's kind of a wonky one. Anybody, Carrie or Justin have anything to add, or Kevin on this one? This is just, I'll say, an element of the model code that's not embedded in your development code, and we're wondering, is this something worth incorporating this way?
Matt, I'd say, one comment we have is, we have not yet had an opportunity to discuss this with the city attorney. We'd like to be able to, to spend some time. With, uh, city attorney and, and kind of debate pros and cons of making a change, but. Um, from my perspective as a user of the code, uh, I kind of liked the additional. Um, information that's embedded in the model code. It just, it provides more direction to me and I think to users than the existing code does, so. I found some benefits to it, but, um, yeah, still have not had a chance to discuss with the city attorney. Uh, the one, I was having the planning director. Name dropped in this, uh, there's one piece that I do like, uh, it does kind of stratify. This kind of the severity and significance of the violations, uh, putting in type one, type two. Uh, currently, right now, uh, you know, we have. You know, it's really one type of violation that follows the same path regardless of its severity, whether it's an annoyance. Or, or whether it's, you know, kind of a full blown. Health, safety, welfare issue. So having some predetermined categories. Uh, within there that, that differentiates the two, I, I think is helpful. Um, you know, we. We do do code enforcement, um, however, we always like to pick. You know, this, kind of the right tool and right process for the job. Uh, and so some of these things, I think, I, I like. I like it being explicit. Um, not only for us as staff and using it, but also for, uh, if you end up as a. As a, on the other side of a code enforcement issue, um, to know. You know, how, uh, how it's being enforced and what comes next. Uh, if you're a code enforcement, if, if you have a code enforcement issue and you have a complaint, also it helps. I like giving more information as a, as a neighbor or as a complainant, you also have some. Some idea and access to the rules on, on how does this happen, rather than. You complain and it goes into the ether and you don't know what's going to happen here, whether it gets resolved or not, or whether there's issues. I like having it scripted out a little bit, so. Whether that becomes born in the zoning code or whether it stays in the municipal code in a different place. I'm not particularly concerned about that. I do like it being explicit, though. We're, we're talking about, you know. Civil proceedings against. You know, our residents and our neighbors and our friends and businesses, like, I think it's good to have a clear expectation of what's. What's happening when, when it, when it comes to you.
I agree, like, the previous code was kind of vague. Or not, definitely not clear in the penalty and abatement section. And I think that it makes sense to have everything that's related to. Housing or meeting the code in the, in the code itself. So you don't necessarily have to go somewhere else to try and find the process of what's going to happen. And I felt like this was very clear.
Yeah, any other thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I, I, I really do like the clarity that it, it would provide the, the model. The model code language that you guys, um, provided here, just. Yeah, I, I like that direction as well. Adds clarity for. An offending party, whether they know it or not, and, you know, if somebody has a complaint. I kind of, I think it's easier to, to feel heard and understood. What the complaint is. And to just have a different level of, uh, enforcement or stop, work stop order. Yeah, I think generally. Well prescribed change.
In this case, I think the detail is good.
Awesome. Alright, well, that covers the things we had to ask you about and very much appreciate all the thoughtful comments and. Um, discussion on these things. Um, that's, you know, going to help us a lot as we kind of move forward. And again, we'll be, um, having some similar discussions with the city council and we'll relay what we heard from y'all. Um, and the comments from staff as well when we talk to them. Um, so this has been great. The only thing we have left in terms of the presentation is just to briefly talk about next steps, yep. Uh, maybe before I do that, do y'all have any other questions from us? While we, while you've got us here? At least remotely.
No, no questions.
Okay, so, um, again, um, we'll be having a similar conversation with city council. Ask them some similar questions, relay what we heard from you. And then we'll be, um, updating that first module at the same time that we're working on, um, the second module. As I said, we are working on this, um, video. Um, and again, that, that's, it's going to be a pretty high level kind of. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? What are some examples of why this shouldn't, you know, might mean something to you and? How can you learn more about or get engaged in the process? That's kind of the gist of that video at this point. We haven't set a timeline exactly for when we want to organize and conduct these interested party meetings that are another piece of our. Engagement strategy. We want to be, I think, strategic and efficient about when we do those. Um, and so we've got, you know, this chunk of time in this, working on these set of modules and. Again, at the end, we'll be making more changes. So at some point in the next, probably, I'm going to say couple of months, we'll be organizing and connecting those meetings. And we'll keep you and the council kind of up to date on when we're doing that. So I don't, we just don't have a specific timeline quite yet. Um, again, these brief questionnaires or surveys, we may ask people some of the same questions we're asking y'all. In those surveys, and again, I think our intent on those is not to have, you know, a couple longer surveys, but really just add some very short ones and kind of. Um, notify, notify people about that via the project website or webpage and social media. And, um, anybody who signs up for our interested parties list, so that'll be happening periodically. Um, and then again, um, uh, continuing to work on module two and then bringing. Uh, that back to you, similar to what we've done tonight. And talking through, um, I wouldn't, I won't say a similar set of questions, but a set of questions that are related to. To the, mostly the procedural requirements that are going to be embedded in module two. So that's what we have ahead of us. Any quick questions about that or any questions about that? Makes sense? Alright, well, thank you all. Um, hopefully, there's still some sunshine out there and you get out there soon and enjoy it.
Yeah, thank you all, uh, for this very easy to understand presentation and for holding our hands through the process. Um, this is all pretty exciting.
Yeah, our pleasure. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Carrie.
Yep, back to you later.
Alright, well, I guess that's all we have today. Correct? No, one more thing?
One, one more thing, uh, I just, while, I, I noticed while we were switching gears from. Uh, from voting on your, on your chair. You had actually switched from. Remote to here physically present, so, uh, just in order to have. I know, we can make this even more ceremonious, uh, there was a discussion and a, and a motion to. Have member Hoffman become the, from interim chair to active chair and, um, you all. You, you can, you can vote for or against that too. I just wanted to make sure it was clear and, uh, between the four of you that that was, that was in place, so. Still unanimous.
Okay, thanks.
Thank, thank you for indulging. And, and we, we haven't had anyone join online. Alright.
Okay, no public comment. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn the meeting at ten after seven. Alright, thank you.